Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, please place all electronic devices, all electronic devices to vibrate. Madam Majority Leader.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of September 26, 2024. I am Majority Leader Amanda Farias, and I'd like to thank you for joining us. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website. On behalf of the body, I welcome the members of the public who have joined us here today. During stated meetings, only members of the council may speak. Members of the public shall remain silent. If you wish to express your support of any remarks, you may use the silent approval gesture. I want to remind my colleagues that decorum is to be respected at all times. Insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Roll call?
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola.
Present.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Banks.
Present.
Botcher.
Present.
Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Caban.
Present.
Carr. De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Felice.
Here.
Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Here.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Mamarato.
Present.
Marte.
Present.
Mealy. Menon. Moya.
Present.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Present.
Osay.
Present.
Palladino. Powers. Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Shulman.
Present.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung. Vernikov.
Here.
Williams.
Present.
Wan.
Present.
Yeager.
Here.
Juang.
Here.
Borelli. Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Raymond Sehrano of Life Together Works NYC, which is located at 2347 Lafayette Avenue in the Bronx.
I want to begin by thanking each and every one of you for your service to every community you represent. I am part of the communities you represent, and we are so thankful that you care, that you serve, and that you fight, and it's well appreciated. Don't think you're doing it for nothing. Father, we thank you. We thank you for this day that you have given us, and we thank you that we made it here safe. We thank you for this meeting that is about to take place. Lord, I pray that you would give everyone here wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, oh God. I pray, Lord, that they would see and come together as partners to serve best this city, this great city, my God. Lord, we are in some rough times, my God, but I thank you, Lord, that these folks have come together and stand firm because they've listened, and they are about to put in action what they feel is best for this city, my God. I pray, Lord, that you continue to bless them, that you would open the windows of heaven, my God, and shower them with your blessings, strength, and good health. I pray, Lord, that our communities would get better, my God, each and every day, my God, as we fight to do what's best for everyone. Your word says to love your neighbor as yourself. This is part of loving our neighbors, fighting for them when they don't have a voice. We thank you for this time together. We pray this in the name of the Father, the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. For more than 15 years, Reverend Raymond Sehrano has been building a community in the Bronx through his devotion and love for his neighbors. His church in the Castle Hill neighborhood of my district is a place of worship and connection, as well as a dedicated community space, serving hundreds of people a month with food distributions, community events, and more. Reverend Sehrano was born and raised in the Bronx, living in Fordham, Parkchester, and Co-op City. He earned his bachelor's degree in pastoral ministry from Nyack College and has been serving in full-time ministry for the past 26 years. He served as a director of the Care Ministry at Crossroads Tabernacle and the administrative pastor at Harvest Field Community Church, before he was led to plant Life Together Fellowship in 2010 with his beautiful wife, Pastor Perse Sehrano, and his 12 older other brothers and sisters in Christ. In 2020, Reverend Sehrano founded Life Together Works NYC, a nonprofit organization that serves the community with free services such as a weekly food pantry, senior citizen nutrition classes, movie afternoons, and the LT Works NYC School of the Arts, which offers children in the community with free music lessons. Pastor Ray has served as regional director for the E-Lim Fellowship Metro New York, New Jersey region as board president of Diasco Christians Association, and currently as founder and executive director of Life Together Works NYC and the East Bronx Community Active in Disaster. I am fortunate to have Pastor Sehrano and the Life Together community as neighbors and with them just down the block from my district office. Thank you again so much for being with us today and for all that you do in the Castle Hill community, and for making this trek down to City Hall on this very rainy day. I will now make a motion to spread today's invocation on the record. We will now have the adoption of minutes by Councilmember Lincoln Wrestler.
I would like to make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of September 12, 2024 be adopted as printed.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
M-71. Queensborough President Appointment.
Rules, privileges, and elections.
Positions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
M-72 and M-73.
Coupled on call-up vote, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-ups.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brannon.
Pass.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks Powers.
Permission to vote on land use call-ups and all items on the general order calendar?
Permission granted. Your vote, councilmember?
Sorry, I started talking really quickly. Aye on all, and congrats, everyone. Thank you.
Caban.
Permission to vote on all items on today's agenda?
Permission granted.
I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Carr. Land use call-ups.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Felice.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Thank you. Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Councilmember Joseph? Land use call-ups?
Aye on all.
Thank you. Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Mamarato.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy. Farias.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Speaker Adams.
Aye.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative and 0 in the negative. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. Over the weekend, our city lost a dedicated public servant to a workplace accident. Richard Erico was a 19-year veteran sanitation worker based in Northeast Queens, and his contributions to our city will never be forgotten. Earlier this month, we lost 56-year-old vendor Leslie Sanchez in the Bronx and 26-year-old spa worker Jue May Tang in Queens to workplace violence. And we also mourn the loss of a 71-year-old resident who died in a fatal fire in Councilmember Lewis's district on Friday. Our hearts go out to their families, colleagues, and loved ones as they work to heal from these tragedies. On September 15, NYPD officers opened fire at the Sutter Avenue L train station in Brooklyn, resulting in the severe injuries for several New Yorkers, including one police officer and two bystanders. Our thoughts are with all those that were harmed in this incident. The safety of everyone in our city must be prioritized, and there are serious and legitimate questions about this use of deadly force that has left New Yorkers simply going about their days with grave, life-changing injuries. The health of public transit requires New Yorkers feeling safe while using it, and this incident only threatens public confidence. It's important that an independent investigation be conducted to determine how we avoid any repeat of this horrific episode. Last Saturday was National Opioid Awareness Day. We can keep each other and our community safe by approaching substance abuse as an urgent matter of public health and safety, concentrating on public health solutions to this deadly crisis. We must recognize the racial disparities in the addiction and overdose crisis and focus on more prevention, harm reduction, and treatment services in the most impacted communities. Last Saturday was also World Alzheimer's Day, a day to increase public awareness about Alzheimer's disease, which is a growing public health crisis. So many have personal connections to this disease, including our own council member and agent committee chair Crystal Hudson, who cared for her mother as she lived with Alzheimer's. We thank Councilmember Hudson for her advocacy for New Yorkers living with Alzheimer's and their families. As we approach the month of October, we want to recognize National Domestic Violence Awareness Month at a time when we uplift survivors of domestic violence. Here in New York City, thousands of domestic violence cases are reported each year, yet we know there is an undercount due to the trauma and stigma associated with domestic violence, resulting in survivors living in fear and silence. We must all work together to end gender-based violence and advance solutions that keep survivors safe and help them recover. October marks the start of Italian-American Heritage and Culture Month, German-American Heritage Month, Filipino-American Heritage Month, and Polish-American Heritage Month. I also want to recognize October as AIDS Awareness Month, Dyslexia Awareness Month, and National Bullying Prevention Month. In council chambers this month, we will be celebrating Dushane on October 1, Italian Heritage Month on October 8, and Hispanic Heritage Month on October 9. We invite all New Yorkers to celebrate with us at City Hall. In observance of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the Women's Caucus is partnering with the American-Italian Cancer Foundation to bring a mammogram bus to the front of City Hall on October 10 from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. They will be providing mammograms for women ages 40 to 79 who are New York City residents. If you are eligible and interested, I encourage you to sign up through our Women's Caucus. Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year, starts on the evening of October 2 through October 4. I wish everyone a happy and sweet New Year. Shana Tova to all New Yorkers who are celebrating. And finally, I want to wish a happy belated birthday to our very own beloved Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, who celebrated her birthday on the 24th. Councilmember Farrah Lewis, whose birthday was yesterday. And Councilmember Chris Banks, who will be celebrating his birthday on the 30th. Happy birthday! And now, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items. Memorial Sloan-Kettering Pavilion will facilitate the development of a new 31-story hospital building in Councilmember Menon's district. The hospital will contain 28 operating rooms, 206 patient beds, and a two-story enclosed patient bridge over East 67th Street connecting the new development with Memorial Hospital on the main block. The council also secured more than $10 million in commitments for Memorial Sloan-Kettering to support construction mitigation efforts, community infrastructure investments, and other improvements for the surrounding neighborhood. The project will deliver results for the Upper East Side community, New Yorkers, and people who come from around the country to seek world-class health care and treatment. Malcolm Shebas Harlem Plaza, an HPD application for a UDOT approval and disposition of city-owned property to facilitate the construction of one new mixed-use building in Councilmember Salam's district. It will include two nine-story towers containing 108 affordable units through HPD's Extremely Low and Low Income Affordability Program, or ELLA, and a new community facility space for the pre-existing vendors market. 150 mil street rezoning will facilitate the development of a mixed-use commercial and industrial building in Councilmember Aviles's district. 2390 McDonald Avenue rezoning will facilitate a new eight-story mixed-use building with 80 housing units, including approximately 24 affordable units under MIH, retail and medical office space in Councilmember Yeager's district. 21st Street rezoning will facilitate the redevelopment of two vacant sites near Astoria Park with new mixed-use buildings, including 92 homeownership units, 28 of which will be affordable homeownership under MIH and Councilmember Caban's district. Two applications in Councilmember Osay's district, Marcus Garvey Boulevard, an HPD application for an Article 11 taxi exemption to facilitate the construction of two 10-story mixed-use buildings consisting of 155 affordable units under HPD's ELLA program and retail space. The Willoughby Heart Historic District, a Landmarks Preservation Commission application to create a new historic district in Bedford-Stuyvesant. The designation includes two blocks of the late 19th-century rowhouses constructed in the Neo-Greek style that, over the years, were home to a diversity of New Yorkers, including German and Irish immigrants of the mid-19th century, Russian Jewish immigrants of the 1920s and '30s, and the city's largest Black community in the mid-20th century. Lastly, two sidewalk café applications. The council will approve CICE Vecinos Restaurants' application for a revocable consent to operate a sidewalk café in Councilmember Salamanca's district, and the council will disapprove Cozy Corner Bars' application for a revocable consent to operate a sidewalk café in Councilmember Holden's district. Today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Introduction 353A, sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, would require the Department of Citywide Administrative Services to install at least 150 megawatts of solar power on city-owned property by December 31, 2035. The bill would also require DCAST to meet several interim deadlines, including having 100 megawatts completed, and the location of the remaining 50 megawatts planned by 2030. In selecting sites for solar installations, DCAST would be required to prioritize properties in disadvantaged communities. As we mark Climate Week NYC this week, the council will continue to pass bills that advance efforts to combat the climate crisis. Thank you to staff members Austin Malone and Claire McLaughlin. Introduction 346A, sponsored by Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse, would permit pedestrians to legally cross a roadway at any point, including outside of a marked or unmarked crosswalk, and allow for crossing against traffic signals. It would legalize the activity commonly referred to as jaywalking, and specifically, that crossing against a traffic signal or outside of a crosswalk will not be a violation of the Administrative Code and therefore can no longer be the subject of a summons. The bill would also require the Department of Transportation to conduct an education effort regarding the rights and responsibilities of pedestrians and of operators of motor vehicles, bicycles, and other mobility devices on city roadways. Thank you to staff members Mark Chen, Zahar Mozami, Connor Mealy, John Basile, and Kevin Kautowski. Introduction 736A, sponsored by Councilmember Shana Abreu, would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene in consultation with the Department of Sanitation and an expert in rodent control to establish a pilot program to deploy rat contraceptives within 180 days of the bill's enactment for a period of at least 12 months. DOHMH would be required to establish two pilot program areas and at least one comparison area with similar building types. During the pilot program, DOHMH would be required to perform monthly inspections of such areas to track signs of rats. After the pilot program, DOHMH would be required to provide a report to the mayor and council of its findings and other information collected during the pilot program. Thank you to our staff members Morgan Barrett, Reese Harota, Ricky Chala, and Audrey Sun. Finally, we will be voting on a package of bills and resolutions to address maternal mental health, which represent the third stop of the council's mental health roadmap. The legislation we're passing today came out of priorities outlined in my State of the City address that are aimed at addressing the mental health challenges faced by new parents and birthing people. The bills include providing support for individuals during postpartum, which is a particularly challenging period for mothers and their health. The maternal health of Black women and other people who can become pregnant is a matter of life and death, and for our Women Majority Council, this issue is personal. Nationwide and in our city, we are still seeing far too many women in certain communities suffer preventable complications and deaths during pregnancy and childbirth. Recent data revealed that Black New Yorkers are six times more likely to die due to pregnancy-related causes than their white counterparts. Too often, Black women have their pain and symptoms dismissed by medical professionals, leading to delayed diagnoses and insufficient care. Addressing these longstanding inequities requires sustained focus and ongoing action, and this council has been clear about the need to deliver results. We will continue to advance comprehensive and holistic solutions to confront this growing crisis. We will vote on the following resolution sponsored by Councilmember Linda Lee. Resolution 402 would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to require health insurance plans to develop and implement a maternal mental health quality management program to promote access to affordable and comprehensive maternal mental health services. Resolution 403 would call upon the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation mandating all accredited psychiatry residency programs to offer a one-year post-residency fellowship program specifically focused on perinatal mental health. Resolution 404 would call on the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to require OB-GYNs to conduct maternal mental health screening during pregnancy and postpartum, and to require Medicaid to cover such services. Resolution 405 would call upon the slate legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation mandating Medicaid managed care organizations to collect and report prenatal and postpartum depression screenings and follow-up data using HADIS measures. And Resolution 406 would designate May annually as Maternal Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of New York, and calling on the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign S.156 and A.6603, which would make the same designation statewide. Next, Introduction 651A, sponsored by Councilmember Kevin Riley, would require the Commissioner of Health and Mental Hygiene to create materials that provide information about the effects of pregnancy loss on mental health and identify mental health resources available to individuals who have experienced pregnancy loss. The commissioner would be required to distribute physical copies of these materials to all facilities operated by the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene that provide reproductive health care and to post electronic copies on the department's website. Additionally, the commissioner must, to the extent practicable, inform family planning clinics within the city and hospital departments, primarily providing reproductive health care about the availability of these materials and make physical copies available to them upon request. Introduction 869A, sponsored by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, would require the mayor's office of community mental health to conduct a public outreach and education campaign to raise awareness about resources available at the city, state, and federal level addressing mental health challenges faced by parents, including perinatal mood disorders. The campaign would be required to be available in the designated citywide languages. Finally, Introduction 890A, sponsored by Councilmember Linda Lee, would require the Commissioner of Health and Mental Hygiene to implement a three-year pilot program to establish postpartum support groups focused on the mental health of postpartum individuals. The support groups would be professionally facilitated and provide access to peer support, educational materials, and resources on home visiting support, lactation consultants, and other maternal health experts. There would need to be at least one group established in each borough, at least one group established in each of the three community districts with the highest rates of postpartum mental health issues, and at least one group established in each of the three community districts facing the greatest community and geographic impacts due to social determinants of poor mental health. The commissioner would be required to submit to the mayor and the council and post online a report on the program, including recommendations on whether to establish a permanent postpartum support group program. Thank you to our staff members Christie Dwyer, John De La Rosa, Sarah Suter, Zahar Mozami, Nicholas Connell, Sarah Lys, and Smita Deschmuk. Thank you very much for your attention. I now turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Riley, followed by Nurse Narcisse and Abreu.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I am incredibly humbled to be here today, to stand here, to pass meaningful action to support individuals and families in our city. At a time when women's health protections are being rolled back in other parts of the country, the New York City Council is moving forward, committing to ensuring that those experiencing pregnancy loss, whether through miscarriage, stillbirth, or termination, receive the resources and care they deserve. My bill, Intro 651A, co-sponsored by 22 of my colleagues, directs the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to create and distribute essential materials that not only address the impact of pregnancy loss, but also connect families to critical mental health support available in multiple languages across the city. These resources will be accessible in DOHMH-operated facilities, family planning clinics, hospitals, and online, ensuring that as many families as possible can reach the support they need. This bill ensures that during one of the most painful experiences a family can endure, they have access to the compassion and care necessary for healing. I want to extend a heartfelt thanks to my colleagues for their unwavering support of this bill. Together, we are demonstrating that in New York City, we stand with families and prioritize compassionate care during their most vulnerable times. Thank you, Majority Leader.
about the effects of pregnancy loss on mental health and identify mental health resources available to individuals who have experienced pregnancy loss. The commissioner would be required to distribute physical copies of these materials to all facilities operated by the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene that provide reproductive health care and to post electronic copies on the department's website. Additionally, the commissioner must, to the extent practicable, inform family planning clinics within the city and hospital departments, primarily providing reproductive health care about the availability of these materials and make physical copies available to them upon request. Introduction eight sixty-nine A, sponsored by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, would require the mayor's office of community mental health to conduct a public outreach and education campaign to raise awareness about resources available at the city, state, and federal level, addressing mental health challenges faced by parents, including perinatal mood disorders. The campaign would be required to be available in the designated citywide languages. Finally, introduction eight ninety A, sponsored by Councilmember Linda Lee, would require the Commissioner of Health and Mental Hygiene to implement a three-year pilot program to establish postpartum support groups focused on the mental health of postpartum individuals. The support groups would be professionally facilitated and provide access to peer support, educational materials, and resources on home visiting support, lactation consultants, and other maternal health experts. There would need to be at least one group established in each borough, at least one group established in each of the three community districts with the highest rates of postpartum mental health issues, and at least one group established in each of the three community districts facing the greatest community and geographic impacts due to social determinants of poor mental health. The commissioner would be required to submit to the mayor and the council and post online a report on the program, including recommendations on whether to establish a permanent postpartum support group program. Thank you to our staff members Christie Dwyer, John De La Rosa, Sarah Suter, Zahar Mozami, Nicholas Connell, Sarah Lys, and Smita Deschmuk. Thank you very much for your attention. I now turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Riley, followed by Nurse Narcisse and Abreu.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'm incredibly humbled to be here today, to stand here, to pass meaningful action to support individuals and families in our city. At a time when women's health protections are being rolled back in other parts of the country, the New York City Council is moving forward, committing to ensuring that those experiencing pregnancy loss, whether through miscarriage, stillbirth, or termination, receive the resources and care they deserve. My bill, Intro six fifty-one A, co-sponsored by twenty-two of my colleagues, directs the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to create and distribute essential materials that not only address the impact of pregnancy loss, but also connects families to critical mental health support available in multiple languages across the city. These resources will be accessible in DOHMH-operated facilities, family planning clinics, hospitals, and online, ensuring that as many families as possible can reach the support they need. This bill ensures that during one of the most painful experiences a family can endure, they have access to the compassion and care necessary for healing. I want to extend a heartfelt thanks to my colleagues for their unwavering support of this bill. Together, we are demonstrating that in New York City, we stand with families and prioritize compassionate care during their most vulnerable times. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Recognizing Councilmember Nurse, followed by Narcisse and Abreu.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Good afternoon, colleagues, and happy Climate Week. Last year, during Climate Week, we introduced Intro three five three, our public solar bill, and today, nearly one year to the day, we are set to vote on and hopefully pass this bill. This bill, which has the most sponsors out of any other bill this session, a bipartisan bill, will require the city to install, maintain, and operate one hundred and fifty megawatts of solar capacity on public sites by 2035 and one hundred megawatts of solar by 2030. This is a remarkable achievement, and we should all be very proud. But as we pass this, we have to be clear of the stakes. Since introducing this bill last year, the U.S. has had over twenty confirmed climate events of a billion dollars or more. Cumulatively, these billion-dollar climate disasters have cost nearly four trillion in damages since nineteen eighty. To say nothing about the day-to-day harm people suffer, that doesn't make the headlines. New York State is on track to exceed the CLCPA's goal of installing six gigawatts of solar capacity by 2035, and today, we are making sure that New York City is doing its part. By utilizing our public assets for solar capacity, whether it's public buildings, parking lots, schools, industrial sites, we will not only help reach our climate goals, but create family-sustaining, green union jobs. This bill also prioritizes installations in disadvantaged communities who are already bearing the brunt of environmental racism. I'm extremely proud of this bill and the work of Climate Jobs New York and Climate Works for All, and I want to thank my alleged director, Ryan Hickey, my former alleged director, Anell Hernandez, the speaker, Jeff Baker, Christopher Murray, Austin Malone, and everyone who helped made this happen. Thank you so much.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Narcisse, followed by Abreu.
Thank you, Madam Majority and Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on the floor. Today, we have the chance to take an important step toward fairness, equity, and public safety with the vote on Intro number three forty-six A. Jaywalking happens in every neighborhood across New York City, but enforcement has disproportionately impacted certain communities, with ninety-six point five percent of jaywalking tickets this year issued to Black and Hispanic New Yorkers. This bill seeks to address that imbalance. Under Intro number three forty-six A, crossing outside of the crosswalk will no longer be a violation of the Administrative Code and can no longer be the subject of a summons. I have spoken with police officers, and many of them have said they prefer to focus on real public safety concerns rather than stopping people for jaywalking. Let's face it, no one's ever said, "I am so glad they caught that jaywalker. I feel so much safer now." Never. Anybody in the room can tell me they never jaywalking? I'm still waiting. No hands. By removing these penalties, we allow our officers to focus on the issues that really matter to public safety. Additionally, this bill will require the DOT to conduct an education effort regarding the rights and responsibilities of pedestrian and operators of motor vehicles, bicycles, and other devices on our city streets. This is crucial for ensuring that everyone understands how to use our streets safely and responsibly. As a register nurse, I will encourage safety because that's what I work for. So I say, Madam Speaker, thank you so much for understanding the important issue that we had faced in our community for decades and addressing the inequities for real. So thank you to all the great legislative team here that we rock. That's all I can say. So thank you for you all. And I have to say, happy birthday to my deputy in communication, Frank Shea, and my chief of staff, Heidi Joseph, and all my team that are doing amazing work to keep our community going. Thank you so much. God bless.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Abreu, followed by Lee.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, the council will vote on our legislation, Introduction seven thirty-six, which would create a pilot program for rat contraceptives. The battle against the city's rats has predated us, and it will outlast us. Winning this war doesn't mean a complete eradication of the other side, however. Instead, we need to learn how to manage the rat population and get it down to a reasonable level, and employ alternative pest management strategies so New Yorkers can have more peace of mind as they're out and about in the city. I want to thank the Lights Out Coalition and the advocates that have worked extensively with us on this bill in memory of Flacco, our friend on the Upper West Side, whose life outside of captivity was cut short after ingesting a poisoned rat. I also want to thank Speaker Adams and all of my colleagues on this council for supporting this bill. Would also like to thank Committee Counsel Morgan Barrett and my Legislative Director, Jalisa Quigley. We need more non-toxic, environmentally-friendly solutions to pest management in New York City, like rat birth control and trash containerization. With today's passage, I'm encouraged that we are headed in the right direction. The days of fighting with outdated methods will hopefully soon be over. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Lee.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Majority Leader, and colleagues. A little over a year ago, this council embarked on the mental health roadmap an ambitious policy plan to help chart a way out of our city's current mental health crisis. Together, we create a blueprint spanning multiple levels of government to address decades of government neglect and the revolving door of hospitalizations, discharges, and arrests that have trapped some of our most vulnerable New Yorkers. Today, we are here as a women-led city council to pass the third stop of that mental health roadmap, focusing on maternal mental health. I want to draw special attention to Intro eight ninety, which would establish a three-year pilot program of postpartum support groups across the city. Many of us in this room know firsthand that the period after childbirth is full of emotional, physical, and psychological challenges. Becoming a parent is wonderful, but can also be extremely difficult. Due to stigma or complacency, our society has not talked about this nearly as much as it should. For too long, too many have suffered in silence while navigating life with a newborn. There is still a lot of work to do, but I want to thank the advocates who have worked to shed light on this vital issue, as well as Speaker Adams and Chair Lewis for their leadership and partnership to promote maternal mental health. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, report of special committees?
None.
Report of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Resiliency, and Waterfronts, Intro three fifty-three A, Solar Systems.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU one thirty-two and Reso five eighty-one through LU one thirty-six and Reso five eighty-five, MSK Pavilion.
Coupled on general orders.
LU one thirty-seven and Reso five eighty-six, one fifty Mill Street rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
LU one thirty-eight through one forty, various rezonings.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section one nine seven of the New York City Charter.
LU one forty-one to fifty, Eighty-Sixth Street rezoning.
Coupled to be filed pursuant to letter of withdrawal.
LU one forty-three and Reso five eighty-seven, Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Plaza.
Coupled on general orders.
LU one forty-four and Reso five eighty-eight, Willoughby Heart Historic District.
Coupled on general orders.
LU one forty-five and Reso five eighty-nine and LU one forty-six and Reso five ninety, Twenty-first Street rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
LU one forty-seven and Reso five ninety-one, tax exemption.
Coupled on general orders.
LU one fifty-four and Reso five ninety-two, Seize Vasinos Restaurant.
Coupled on general orders.
LU one fifty-five and Reso five ninety-three, Cozy Corner Bar.
Motion to disapprove.
Pre-considered LU one fifty-six and Reso five ninety-four and pre-considered LU one fifty-seven and Reso five ninety-five, twenty-three ninety McDonald Avenue.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities, and Addiction, Intro six fifty-one A, eight sixty-nine A, and eight nine zero A, Parental Mental Health Resources.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Sanitation and Solid Waste Management, Intro seven thirty-six, Rat Contraceptive Pilot Program.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
General Orders Calendar, Intro three forty-six A, Pedestrian Crossing Guidelines.
Coupled on general orders, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's General Orders Calendar.
Vernikov.
Aye on all, except no on LU one forty-four and accompanying Reso five eighty-eight, and no on Intro three forty-six A. Thank you.
Thank you. Abreu.
Aye.
Areola.
Aye on all, with the exception of Intro three forty-six A, which I am a no.
Thank you.
Aye on all, congratulations, Councilmember Nurse.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye on all, and congratulations to the councilmembers.
Thank you.
Aye on all.
Brennan.
Aye on all, with the exception of LU one forty-four and Reso five eighty-eight, in which I abstain.
Aye.
Carr.
Vote no on Intro three forty-six A, and I on the rest.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Aye on all.
Dinowitz.
Aye on all.
Aye on all, congratulations to everyone passing bills.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye on all.
Thank you.
Aye on all.
Hanks.
Aye on all.
Holden.
Aye on all, except for Intro three forty-six A and LU one forty-four and accompanying Reso five eighty-eight, which I vote no.
Thank you. Hudson.
Aye on all.
Thank you.
Aye on all.
Krishnan.
Aye on all.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Lewis.
Aye on all.
Mamorato.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of Intro three forty-six A, I am a no.
Aye on all.
Mealy.
Aye on all.
Moya.
I vote aye on all.
Thank you, Councilmember Moya. Narcisse.
Aye on all.
Nurse.
I vote aye on all.
Osay.
Aye on all.
Palladino.
I vote aye on all, except for LU one forty-four, coupled with five eighty-eight, also a no vote on three forty-six A.
Aye on all. I'm voting aye on all and abstaining on LU one forty-four and Reso five eighty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Salam.
Permission to explain my vote on Reso five eighty-seven. The Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Plaza is more than just a new development in Harlem. It's a reflection on our community's resilience and commitment to economic empowerment and social justice. Based on the feedback that I've received from my constituents, I'm confident that this development will include strong support for veterans and minority-owned businesses looking to bolster the legacy of trade in Harlem. Community-based organizations are also motivated to provide the resources necessary for both residents and shop owners to thrive. The legacy of Malcolm X will be honored throughout this plaza, ensuring Harlem remains a hub of black excellence. With affordable housing, commercial spaces, and room for community gatherings, this project bridges Harlem's past with its promising future, and I want to thank everyone involved in making this vision a reality. With that, I proudly vote aye on all.
Thank you. Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Sanchez.
Aye on all.
Schulman.
Aye on all.
Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ong.
I vote aye on all.
Juan.
Aye on all.
Jaeger.
Aye on all, with the exception of Introduction three forty-six and LU one forty-four and accompanying Resolution five eighty-eight. Thank you.
Zhuang.
Aye on all, except Intro three forty-six A, and I want to abstain LU one forty-four and the Reso. Thank you.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
Aye.
All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of forty-eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of LU one forty-four and Reso five eighty-eight, which was adopted by a vote of forty-one in the affirmative, five in the negative, and two abstentions, and Introduction three forty-six A, which was adopted by a vote of forty in the affirmative, eight in the negative, and zero abstentions. We will now move into introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committee as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We will now move into the discussion of resolutions, and seeing no one signed up to speak, we will now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution four oh two calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to require health insurance plans to develop and implement a maternal mental health quality management program to promote access to affordable and comprehensive maternal mental health services. Will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution four zero three calls upon the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation mandating all accredited psychiatric residency programs to offer a one-year post-residency fellowship program specifically focused on perinatal mental health. Will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution four zero four calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to require obstetricians and gynecologists to conduct maternal mental health screening during pregnancy and postpartum, and to require Medicaid to cover such services. Will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution four zero five calls upon the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation mandating Medicaid managed care organizations to collect and report prenatal and postpartum depression screenings and follow-up data using HEADIS measures. Will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution four zero six designates May annually as Maternal Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of New York, and calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign Senate Bill number one fifty-six and Assembly Bill number six six zero three, which would make the same designation statewide. Will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Hanks, followed by Wrestler, then Lewis.
Thank you so much, Madam Majority Leader. Today, I will speak on a matter that cuts deep into the history of our city, an often forgotten and unrecognized part of our collective past, Intro ten fifty-one. Many of you may be aware of the African-American burial ground in Lower Manhattan, discovered by accident during construction, but what you may not know is that there are similar burial grounds right here under our feet across the city. There are places where the remains of our ancestors, people who endured unimaginable hardships, were laid to rest and then buried again under asphalt and concrete. In my own district, we discovered one such burial In my own district, we discovered one such burial ground beneath parking lot in, over at 7-Eleven, and a Santander Bank lie the unmarked graves of African-Americans, including Benjamin Prine, a veteran of the War of 1812, and the last person born enslaved and living in New York City. His final resting place, like many others, was nearly erased from history, but we are working to ensure that that doesn't happen. We've co-named the street where he is buried, Benjamin Prine Way. This is the first in the city's history, a street that has been co-named for a formerly enslaved person. We've installed a plaque, and the Landmarks Preservation Commission is now working to protect this site on a map and has a historical landmark. But colleagues, this is not just about my district, it is about all of ours. The sad truth is, there are likely unmarked African burial grounds in many of our districts, sites where important pieces of our history have been paved over and forgotten. We cannot let that continue. That is why I am asking you today to join me as co-sponsors on LS 1051, the Benjamin Prine Act. This bill will establish a formal process to identify, recognize, and preserve formerly African-American burial sites across our city. This will ensure that these sacred places are marked, protected, and remembered as they should have been from the start. We have an opportunity and a responsibility to prevent further erasure of these burial grounds and restore dignity to those who built the city and ensure future generations learn the history of our past. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to recognize Councilmember Wrestler, followed by Lewis, then Joseph.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader. I am proud, well, I guess when we drafted this bill, it was kind of during quaint times before the chaos of today, but I'm very proud to be introducing Intro 1062 with 38 co-prime sponsors on this bill. Bipartisan and diverse coalition of councilmembers from every borough in support of this legislation to repeal the mayor's silly form. We're duly elected to do our jobs, which is to hold city agencies accountable and make sure that city agencies are keeping our neighborhoods clean and safe, and unfortunately, the mayor created this form to prevent us from being able to do our jobs. It shouldn't matter whether you're a Democrat or Republican, a friend of the mayor or a skeptic of the mayor. We should be able to deliver for our constituents, and the mayor's form has gotten in the way. And I'm really proud that at the time of introduction, we have a veto-proof majority on this bill. I think it's unclear whether the mayor's going to be around to continue to implement his form, but if he is, I'm eager for us to push this bill forward and really want to thank each and every one of my colleagues who signed on in support of this legislation so that we can most effectively and efficiently deliver for our constituents. So thank you very much to each of the co-sponsors, to the other 12 folks out there. There's still time. We can get a unanimous consent on this one, and hope you'll consider co-sponsoring this bill as well. Thank you again.
And I'd like to recognize Councilmember Lewis, followed by Joseph, then Sanchez.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Imagine arriving at Rikers Island for routine intake, trying to navigate an unfamiliar system. You wouldn't think that being deceived, harassed, or sexually assaulted is part of the protocol. Now imagine hundreds of inmates who have experienced violence with no recourse or recognition from the government, subjected to horrific abuses of power with no clear path to justice. With over 700 incarcerated women with lawsuits against the city this year for rampant sexual abuse by the Department of Corrections staff, under the Adult Survivors Act, we know these alarming claims are not isolated incidents. They are systemic failures that have plagued Rikers Island for decades. Jail wardens and even medical staff are now known predators through groping, forcible touching, and other forms of sexual violence. This is why today I'm introducing Intro 1061, aiming to rectify critical gaps in the Department of Corrections reporting on allegations of sexual harassment and abuse. This bill will require the department to assign unique identifiers for each incident and victim, clarify their reporting, and provide justifications when subjugated cases are not referred to district attorneys. An audit by the city council's data team revealed that the current reports mandated by local law 21 of 2019 lack transparency, use undefined terms, and fail to provide clear information about allegations and investigations, putting vulnerable individuals, particularly women and LGBTQ+ inmates, in custody at severe risk for unreported violence. I urge my colleagues to sign on to this critical bill, and I want to thank Speaker Adams for prioritizing this bill and our commitment to justice. Thank you.
And I'd like to recognize Councilmember Joseph, followed by Sanchez, then Palladino.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, Madam Speaker, and fellow colleagues. Today, I'm proud to introduce my bill, Intro 1057, alongside my co-prime sponsors, Councilmember Ose, Hanif, Narcisse, Brooke Powers, and Riley. This bill, Intro 1057, which amend the Administrative Code of New York City, focuses on student journalism programming on New York City high schools. It requires the chancellor to submit an annual report to the mayor and the speaker of the city by August 31 of each year. This report must also be posted on New York City Public School website, detail the students' program. Earlier this year, with the support of my colleagues, I introduced and passed Resolution 372, calling on New York City Public School to support the creation of student newspapers in every high school. This bill is another step in ensuring that all high school students not only have access to student publications, but also receive journalism education. As I said in my interview with the New York Times, the introduction of this bill, I hope to create a workforce of young journalists that can tell stories from their neighborhoods where they grew up, resilience, immigrant stories, and all stories across the city. I encourage my fellow councilmembers to reach out and sign on to the bill. Finally, I'd like to thank the youth coalition journalism team for their advocacy, my staff for their hard work, and the bill drafter for helping turn this idea into reality. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Sanchez, followed by Palladino, then Brewer.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Across the city, hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers live in distressed buildings, 10,000 buildings with 115,000 units, with owners that owe tens of millions of dollars to the city. We're talking about children's, children families, elderly persons living with mold, vermin-led, collapsed ceilings, and the threat thereof, and more. The program that the city had to deal with this kind of condition, the third-party transfer program, was disastrous in its previous administrations, scarring to communities of color in its final round administered in 2019, the round 10. So today, I'm proud to be introducing the Housing Rescue and Resident Protection Act, which conserves the power of the city to municipally foreclose on buildings, taking buildings away from the worst actors, but rectifying the harms of the past. This act, the Housing Rescue and Resident Protection Act, tries to protect homeownership while targeting the rescue of the worst buildings. I hope my colleagues will join me in taking a look at Intro 1063, which will be heard on Monday at 1:00 PM. We don't think we got everything right, but we did incorporate feedback from over 50 organizations and individuals who have participated in reform efforts over the past five years, have testified, and it's a great body of work. Shout out to Ben Ratner, to Taylor Zalone, and everyone else who worked on this 70-page bill, and of course, to our co-primes. Thank you, Majority Leader.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Palladino, followed by Brewer.
Thank you very much. As the Speaker mentioned earlier in her opening statement, that sanitation worker, Richard Erico, came from my district, and I want to extend my deepest condolences to the family and friends and colleagues of Richard, a 19-year veteran of the Department of Sanitation, who tragically lost his life in the line of duty. Words cannot express, adequately convey the profound sadness and sense of loss for someone who was so dedicated to the people of the City of New York. May Richard rest in peace. May his wife, Carol, his daughters Brooke and Paige, find peace, and his brother Tommy, carry on. Thank you very much.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. Intro 1048 is what I'm discussing. One of the biggest complaints that we all get, at least I get, is siren noise pollution. Yet there's no way for people to file a proper complaint or for the city to gather data on this problem. So 1048 directs the Department of Environmental Protection and related agencies to conduct a study to identify areas with the highest levels of siren noise levels, peak times of occurrence, and propose measures for reducing this noise. DEP will also establish a toll-free number and dedicated webpage for residents to submit complaints during the study and report findings. Hopefully, this will have crucial data to understand and mitigate the impact of siren noise in our community and an effective emergency response. We don't have yet the ability to get rid of the loudest of the sirens. Interns in attendance here today, Noah Sigelson, who's at the Columbia School of Social Work, Savannah Jackson at Hunter College, and Eric Halib, Middlebury College, and of course, we have hundreds more in my office. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmembers. Seeing no one else signed up to speak today, I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The stated meeting of September 26, 2024, is hereby adjourned.
BLAC members, there is a meeting today in the committing room. BLAC.